I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, December 11th, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were just a few items in the table file.
Yes, we've added one item for discussion, just to do a recap of the December 4th work session and discuss just some next steps with the facilities plan. We also have a couple of appointments, increase, decrease, and change in assignment, as well as retirement. And so those are your changes for the table file this evening for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. And as a point of reference, there will be an opportunity for public comment regarding the truth in taxation presentation, following that presentation, which will occur in just a few minutes. So is there anyone here who wishes to address the board on something possibly other than the truth in taxation? Okay, so seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes, two sets of minutes, actually, the regular school board meeting held on Monday, November 22nd, 2017, as well as the minutes for the World's Best Workforce Public Hearing, also held that same evening, November 22nd, 2017.
It's 27.
27, I'm sorry. What am I doing? Thank you, Dinita. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting and the public hearing held on Monday, November 27th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I have two announcements this evening. First of all, I just want to recognize the students who participated in the third annual poetry slam last Friday night. I had the chance to judge that third annual high school poetry slam. It was here in the auditorium, and a sizable crowd, I would say. Her 21 students performed various kinds of poetry and prose. Chris Lozaro was this year's winner. And of course, we just want to thank Jennifer Lampart and her team for this great organization of the event. As many of you know, many students participate in the poetry slam, our students in our English Language Learners Program, in terms of, you know, working on their language skills and public performance skills. And it is quickly becoming one of my favorite events of the year. It's just, it's outstanding. Students who have the courage to get up in front of a full auditorium and share their work. So we're very thankful to Jennifer for her organization of the event. And I know Board Member Hardy also does a lot of work helping prepare those students for that event. And again, if you not had a chance to go, please make sure you put it on your calendar next year, because it really is fantastic. And then also, over the weekend, the Northfield High School Choir performed its annual traditions concert in Skinner Chapel on the campus of Carleton College. And again, just an excellent concert, and our choirs really positively represent the school district and are just outstanding musicians. And we really appreciate that continued partnership with our two local colleges. You know, in the fall, it was, it's Carleton who allows us to use their beautiful space at Skinner Chapel. And then, of course, another time during the year, we have students singing at Bow Chapel at St. Olaf. And our students are so fortunate to have these world-class learning institutions who share these really awe-inspiring locations for them to share their musical talents. So again, just another very special moment in our music program. So I know some of you got to attend, again, just a fantastic. So thanks to Kyle Eastman and all the folks who helped prepare that. Those are your announcements for this evening.
Excellent. Is there anything board members would like to add? Okay, we'll move on to our first item for discussion and report, which we had earlier referenced, is the truth in taxation presentation for the payable 2018 property tax levy. And just as a reminder, there will be an opportunity for public comment following Val Mersdorf's presentation. Welcome, Val.
Good evening. Got a lot of papers here, so I'm going to try and get them organized. I'm just doing the arrows on the keyboard?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so tonight, I'm going to talk about our final levy certification and our general fund budget as part of our truth in taxation requirement. So the levy cycle just kind of is an understanding of how this all comes about and what our responsibility is in this process. Each year, the Assessor, Rice County Assessor's Office determines the property value of each property within Rice County. We do obviously have a little bit of property in Dakota and Goody County, so that plays into it as well, but Rice County is our biggest portion. The county auditor calculates the net tax capacity for each parcel. There are 40 property class classes in the state of Minnesota, which is a state statute, so you could be residential homestead, commercial, that sort of thing. And those rates that you get assessed are based on your classification. So your estimated market value is then multiplied by this class rate, and then the net tax capacity basically is that calculation all added up together for the taxing jurisdiction. So every property that is with Northfield Public Schools has that calculation, and that total gets added up together. Our estimated tax capacity for 2018 is $22,838,876, which is about a 6.5% increase over the prior year. The local tax rate, so we are considered a taxing jurisdiction, is determined just by dividing our total levy by our taxable capacity. So each jurisdiction certifies a dollar amount, and that is then divided by the tax capacity to get a rate, which is then applied to your, the tax capacity of your property. I think one of the common questions that we get is why, you know, why our taxes are always increasing and those sorts of things, and how they relate to your market value. And I think the important thing to remember is that each jurisdiction is certifying a dollar amount, so even if all of the property values were cut in half across the entire county, the amount that we're levying is still the same. So that's important to keep in mind. Your market value certainly doesn't, does play into the amount that you get assessed, but it's more about the dollar amount. Those notices, my understanding is that there's mailing in the string that you are made aware of what your property value will be for the next year. And then in September, we're required to do the preliminary levy certification, which is what those dollar amounts then go on your tax statement that you get in November. The Minnesota Department of Education does set our maximum levy of what we can have access to. And typically, each year in September, we certify to the max to give us that flexibility between September and December to analyze our budget and then come with our final levy. And we can only increase the levy between September, December, if we had any kind of voter-approved increase, excuse me. So then, we have the meeting in September and the meeting tonight, and that is how the amounts get set for the school district. So there's quite a few factors that go into your individual property tax statement and can increase it or decrease it from year to year. Voter-approved referendums, changes in enrollment, about 85% of our general fund dollars of our levy are directly related to enrollment-based formulas. So that's a pretty significant factor for our levy. Levy adjustments for prior years. The state of Minnesota can do adjustments for up to three years after the initial taxing year. And we talked about that a little bit in September, that we've had a decrease in our negative adjustments, which has resulted in a bigger levy, basically. Legislative changes, which I'll talk about, the most significant one that's impacting us this year. Your change in market value, if your property was, if the class was changed from residential to commercial or apartment or something like that. If there are statutory changes in the class rates, that would impact it as well. And then obviously, levies by other taxing jurisdictions all play into the total number that go onto your actual tax statement. Legislative impacts for the school district this year, the most significant was our long-term facilities maintenance revenue. That is based on a working group that MDE had put together, and it was a three-year phased-in increase. So we are in our third year for our pay 18 levy, and so we are looking at going from $292 per pupil unit to $380 per pupil unit. Again, this funding replaces the health and safety and deferred maintenance programs, and really allows us to basically repair or maintain our existing infrastructure. We can't build anything new and that sort of thing. So the 292 to 380 is about a 30% increase. And on top of our 3.4% increase in enrollment, that was a pretty significant increase for our levy this year. So the overall property tax levy for pay 18, our overall authority is up $3,679,064.29, or 23.62%. And this is primarily due to the voter-approved operating referendum increase of $470.15 per pupil that was approved November 7th, the incremental phase-in of the LTFM revenue that I just discussed, and then our increase in pupil counts. Like I mentioned, we had about a 3.4% increase in our pupil count. Primarily, I mean, we've obviously seen increased enrollment, but we have seen a more significant increase at our secondary. And those students are weighted at 1.2, so that makes the percent increase even larger than the actual increase in the number of students that we've seen. So our preliminary was about $17.3 million, and our final certified will be $19,256,128.89. So this chart just kind of compares pay, our pay 17 levy to our pay 18 levy, what was preliminarily certified, and then what our final certification was. You can see in pay 17, it was pretty similar. In pay 18, the difference, if you're coming down, the $1.9 million is the increase for the referendum that was approved November 7th. And if you're going across, the 1.7 is really the increase due to enrollment and the statutory formulas that we have access to. So that kind of gives you the breakout between the major pieces there for a total of the 3.6 million dollar increase. So as a percentage of how it breaks out, 52% of our levy is our voter-approved referendum. About 28% is our debt service, and 14% is our general fund other, which includes our local optional revenue, operating capital, the long-term facility maintenance revenue, building lease, and our OPEB, other post-employment benefits, revenue. Community services has about 2% of that total, and then our voter-approved capital projects levy of $750,000 is about 4% this year. So this is a lot of numbers to look at, but it breaks it out by fund, by the different tax base, and by voter-approved and other. So the general fund, as you can see, is our most significant increase at about 32%. Again, that is primarily due to our increased enrollment, the increased long-term facilities, and the voter-approved increase in the operating referendum. Community services had a slight increase of about 2.5%, and our debt service one increased about 7.5%. Debt service is a little more than prior years, mostly because we have kind of flattened out with our debt service excess. We had a pretty significant fund balance in our debt service fund, and so the last couple of years, they've had a pretty significant negative adjustment for our debt excess, and that's leveling out now. So that is kind of one of those less negative adjustments that I referred to earlier. So the subtotals by tax base, referendum market value is the tax base that our referendum and our local optional revenue and our equity revenue are valued at. And then net tax capacity is basically everything else, all of our debt. And so you can kind of see the breakout, almost 50/50 there, 10 million to 9 million for those totals. And then the voter-approved and other, the voter-approved is a 27% increase primarily because of the November 7th election and our increased enrollment. And the other increase of about 17% is the long-term facilities maintenance and the other revenue formulas that are driven based on enrollment. I think it's important to look at the history. Obviously, this year, we're looking at a pretty significant increase in our revenue for our levy. But historically, our average over the last six years is about 3.5%. And three of those six years, we actually decreased our levy, not, you know, very slightly, but certainly wasn't an increase. And one of the things that I think is important is we were always looking for ways to decrease our levy and reduce the tax impact for our community. Over the last six years since I've been here, we have refunded about $5.6 million in our debt service, and that's a direct savings for taxpayers. That's not money that comes back to the district, but we choose to do those things to help out the tax impact. So while this year's, it's clearly significant, I think our history shows that we've been responsible in trying to keep it level, but we know that the state is not keeping up with inflation. The, I think the 30-year gap for inflation is 2,188 per pupil, to have the same buy-and-power that we would have had in 1990, 91. So if you compare that to our generous community providing us with $1,967 per pupil unit, they're really stepping in to fill that gap that the state has left. I think that's, that is all I have on that. I'm going to talk about the general fund budget and how, and the revision, and how that all kind of plays into everything, and then we'll take questions at the end and public comment, if that's okay. So the general fund budget, obviously, this levy is a significant component of that, and we have taken this opportunity to revise it, primarily because we now have the audited data from fiscal '17. Our October 1st enrollment is no longer a projection. We have employee agreements finalized, most of our new contracts are finalized, and all of our new staff have been hired. So we know exactly where they were placed and all those sorts of things, and so we can have a better, better sense of what the budget needs to look like. So our enrollment projection, you know, as I've said, we are seeing increasing enrollment still. Our June estimate for our enrollment was 4,424 weighted pupil units. I'm only increasing that slightly to 4,434, but you can see that's still a pretty significant jump over our '16, '17 actual of 4,392. So we are still seeing that trend. I don't think it's quite as fast as it maybe has been the last two years, but we're still seeing an increase, so planning for that still. So the revenue revision, just to note, I did, in the '16, '17 numbers, I did exclude all the SubSec numbers, since that was a flow-through just for comparative purposes to make it a little simpler. So our revenue is increasing primarily because of the enrollment increase. That's continuing to be a trend, and I'm typically conservative in June for that. We also had a pretty conservative special add estimate, with last year being the first year of SubSec and not really 100% sure how that was all going to flow through. We were pretty conservative on what we were expecting from the state, and now they've got one year under the belt, and so we feel a little bit better about what that's looking like. So that was an increase. Those were the two primary increases for the state sources. Our federal sources increased slightly. We have a one-time grant to do some of our MTSS programming and help support some of those things, as well as some carryover that we're planning to spend down, that we've been kind of waiting to see what the dynamic at the federal level is going to be. And then our local sources have been increasing. We've had an increase in activity participation, an increase in our MA revenue, and those are kind of the big ones. '16, '17 looks a little high, because this was the first year that we included rock-and-roll revival in there, so obviously, that's an other, every other year impacts, so that's why it looks less than last year's actual. I think those are the bulk of the changes, so we're looking at about $50.39 million for our total revenue for our revised general fund. Expenditures has quite a few different moving parts for the budget this year. The salaries and benefits were increasing about $245,000. This is primarily due to special education increases. We've seen an increase in our special education student enrollment, and that typically comes with additional staff to help support those students. We've seen about a 12% increase over the last year in our educational assistant hours, and that's really kind of that one-on-one support that some of our students need. And our benefits have increased about, the budget's increasing about $273,000. The last several years, you've noticed probably that we've had a pretty significant number of retirements. We're hitting that baby boomer generation of retirees, and they, we do have a few contracts that still have a payment for health insurance and that sort of thing. So we have seen about a 20% increase in our retiree payments. We do have, our OPEB revenue does help offset that, but not entirely, because we can only levy for the teacher portion of that payment. And we've also seen an increase in our 403B program, so we have a matching program with most of our contracts, and so there has been a pretty significant increase with that as well. And I think that's probably also partially due to the uncertainty with PRA and TRA and the fully funded, and all, you know, the concerns people have about that long-term as their retirement option. Our purchase service category is increasing about $540,000. A big chunk of it is our transportation contract. We settled a new four-year contract with Benjamin Bus in July, so part of it is that. The other thing that we've really seen a trend with is our activities transportation. When we moved to the Big Nine, we anticipated an increase in our transportation costs just because of the geographic distances that we would be traveling. And it was, it's been about $50,000 more each year than I had budgeted, so I'm bumping that up so that we can make sure we're accurately projecting that. And then the other thing under purchase services is our electricity. We've seen about a 20% increase the last two years each, so 40% in the last two years, so about $300,000 is what I'm increasing that. And Jim's going to talk a little bit about that next, and the things we're doing to try to mitigate some of that, but even with maintaining or reducing our usage, the rates are still increasing. So we're trying to, trying to keep up with that the best that we can. Supplies and other, the most significant increase there is, we did decide in our capital committee meeting to do a one-time, the reading, standardized reading curriculum for the elementary schools. We had talked about doing that out of capital, but there were some other priorities, and since this was a one-time, you know, strategic plan mission, we decided to do that out of the general fund. And then capital and equipment is about $379,000. There were some long-term facility maintenance projects that got prioritized that we hadn't planned for in June, and that just, with the increase in funding, that worked out for the budget this year. So we are looking at about $51.4 million in expenditures. So altogether, we obviously ended fiscal year '17 better than we had anticipated. We did increase the unassigned fund balance by about $750,000. So while we are still projecting a spend-down of our fund balance for '17, '18, we're still actually ending, I'm projecting our unassigned percentage to be better than what I was projecting in June when we did the adaptive budget. So projecting to end at about 22.6% unassigned fund balance. I think that is all of my comments. So do you have any questions, or do you want to do the public comment first?
Do you do the public comment first?
Yes, what I'd like to just offer for board members is that we have now an opportunity for public comment regarding truth in taxation. So this is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. If you'd like to address the board, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address, and limit your remarks to three minutes. And just like to remind the public that this is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate an issue. So is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Yes, please come forward.
Thank you. My name is Victoria Roller, and I live at 1310 Presidential Drive, just a block over from the school. Hopefully, I can get everything in in three minutes. I'll be speaking to the board chairperson, Mrs. Pritchard, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'd like to ask some questions and then make a few comments. I have written those down to be a little more articulate. First of all, in July of this year, did the school board approve an 11.34 operating levy that by state law did not need voter approval? Yes or no?
I'm sorry, but this is an opportunity to address the board and not to debate an issue.
I'm not debating it, I'm simply asking a question.
This is not the forum in which we answer questions, so you can submit those questions, and we could answer those at a later time. But this is not an opportunity for those questions to be answered?
All right. This is a truth in taxation meeting, and that is a question that addresses the truth. All right, I will send you all of those questions and hope that when, within a very short period of time, they are answered.
I can assure you, they will be answered.
I feel like you're just avoiding the questions again.
No, I'm sorry if that's your impression, but that's not the format of this particular forum.
All right, then I will make my comments.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
My first comment is that it seems to me that the Northfield School Board believes that this is a wealthy community. It is for some, but not for all. Examples, there are nearly 900 families that will be part of the Christmas sharing this year. There are many students in the free and reduced lunch program. How many of those families own a property and are on the tax rolls? In my neighborhood, which is just a block over, there are seniors who own their homes but live only on social security. That is true in many other parts of this town. There are many seniors living here in Northfield. I have delivered meals on wheels to senior couples who own their own homes. They received two meals until the price went up, and then they ordered one meal to share between them both. It is important as well for It is important as well for us to be able to contribute to local charities beyond the school district. Example, Community Action Center, our churches, Wings, et cetera. But that will not happen next year and beyond because a fixed income goes only so far, and an 11.34 increase, if that is all that was voter approved, is considerable. If the school district approved another operating levy on top of that, that is a considerable amount of money. I'd like you to please rethink what you are doing to this community by what I feel is an overreaching demand for property tax dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roller.
And I will submit those questions.
Yes, I look forward to receiving them, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay. All right. We will move on then to our next item for discussion, which is the Energy Efficiency Report. We have Director of Billings and Grounds, Jim Kalseth, here to share information about the Excel Energy Renewable Connect Program. Thank you, Jim.
So, over the last couple of years, we've instituted quite a few plans for energy improvement at Northfield Middle School, so I'd like to review those with you today. We started with some pool lighting replacements. We had roughly 12,000 watts of power being used for pool lighting, and we've reduced those by approximately 70% by switching to some LED lights. The initial costs of all of these projects and the rebates and the net costs are on this sheet. We were able to, our in-house electrician was able to accomplish all of this work in-house ourselves, so none of this was done with any outside contractors, so pretty impressive numbers. The second one was a, was a pretty big project that was completed just before school started this fall. That was relamping of all the classrooms and the hallway fixtures at the middle school. A total of 914 fixtures were produced for us, but by, pardon me, produced for us to our specifications and UL listed, and our team did that over the summer. So we have all the hallway lights, all the classroom lights, now our LED fixtures, and we also do some daylight harvesting with those, and a good percentage of those are on motion sensors as well. A work that's in progress currently are 342 fixtures in what I'm calling the commons areas, or a lot of the uplighting that is in the cafeteria, band areas, and media center areas. We purchased the products at a time when we could see significant rebates, and we did that, and currently the work is still in progress, and I foresee those being accomplished before school starts next year, so in other words, this summer. The last item, since the middle school was built, I came to understand that there was a lot of issues with the air quality in the pool area, so we took a good hard look at that, went through some redesigning with some Johnson Controls people, and we didn't get a huge rebate on that project, but we still, we still saved $2,000, and at the end of the day, we've, we've got a very good increase in our air quality there, plus the efficiency of the unit in general. It's running at 100% efficiency compared to the way it was when it was originally installed This is just kind of a graph so you can visualize some of the things. So the column on the left, we did have some contractors quote from a retrofit lighting company, so for them to come in and do all of the lighting work that I just described to you would have been a little over $411,000. Our cost to do this in-house, including labor cost and product, was $194,000. We did see over $64,000 in rebates from Excel for our LED lighting, which leaves us at a net cost of $130,033 to accomplish all of these projects, so pretty significant savings. 68% we saved by doing this work in-house, so some colleagues often ask me how we can justify having a master electrician on staff, and when I point out these types of projects, it just shows that we're really getting our money's worth from, from this group of employees. This slide is taken from our energy consumption history from the B3 Benchmarking website that many state buildings and school buildings participate in. The top blue line shows our natural gas usage, and on the first arrow on the left, if you look on the timeline, it's roughly a year ago, and that is when we completed the pool HVAC unit reprogramming and redesign. So you can see on the left are BTUs and kilowatts, so the BTUs are the blue line, and so you can see over the past year, we've seen a pretty significant reduction in our natural gas usage, and the bottom line being the electricity. Again, we've completed the majority of our lighting project just before school started this year, and that's shown on that second arrow, so there you can see a pretty consistent line leading up to this fall, and there you see a drop in consumption, which of course is the goal. This slide is also from our B3 Benchmarking site. It's a little difficult to see, there's a lot of detail on this site. If any of you care to go through this at any time, I'll be more than happy to invite you to my office. It's fascinating stuff. But what I've circled there shows a time period from last year to a time period of this year, which includes the first two months of school, when all of our LED lights had been implemented. And so you can see we've had around a 10% drop in electronic consumption since we've switched to those lights compared to a year ago. This is also from our benchmarking site. All our buildings are on there as singular and as a whole district, and those numbers on the right, basically that's your 0 to 100 grading or rating system. The buildings are all compared to their peer buildings, buildings similar in size and usage, and so you can see our top performer is Bill Longfellow, as everyone likes to point out, the fallout shelter is in the 83rd percentile. Next is Bridgewater in the 70th percentile, Sibley 65, and from there you see a little drop. The high school is performing in the 40th percentile, and Greenville in the 27th, and unfortunately, you see the middle school there in the 12th percentile, so obviously you can see where we have our work cut out for us, which is why we've taken steps and tried to implement some of these cost-saving ideas and bringing them to the table and getting these jobs done. So a year from now, I'm really looking forward to seeing this benchmark raised up for our middle school. I conservatively, conservatively would like to see us in the 25 to 30 percentile, just with the changes that we've made now. The next thing I'm going to speak about is our commitment to Excel Energy through their Renewable Connect Program. What it is, it's Excel's program for renewable resources. It's their combination of wind and solar power. Roughly, we're at about 30% solar, and the rest is, is wind-generated. And what we've signed up for is a 10-year subscription to their program, and so that means 100% of the power that is used in our buildings comes directly through renewable resources, wind and solar. There are many details to this program, several, many, many aspects to go through. If you've ever spent some time looking at your electric bills, I'm sure you can get mildly confused in, in a short time, and these are similar to that. There's a lot of great things to go through, a lot of things to consider. We did weigh this decision in comparison to joining a solar garden or having our own equipment installed on our buildings. We chose to go with this. We have no upfront costs for this. We have no equipment of our own to maintain. We have no leftover equipment on-site after an agreement is over with. We have stabilized pricing for 10 years, and part of the, part of this, being, being involved with our power company, you can only be involved with one program at a time, so you can't enjoy your own solar while joining a solar garden, while joining this program or any other program. And we've been participating in the Excel curtailment program for many, many years, and with that, we see about a 47% reduced rate in, in our power when we can get the off-peaks, off-peak power that we get from them, and part of that curtailment program, they can call us and tell us when we have to shut down on hot days in the summer and things of that nature. In return for that flexibility, we see the, the reduced rates in our bills. And depending on what our usage is, we do see conservatively $35,000 to $45,000 a year in savings by being involved in that program. Had we gone with a different solar program, we would have had to drop that part, and we just didn't feel that the value was there, and we wanted to stick and team with our power company. And so, as Val stated, we do have some increased costs. Part of what we're working towards is keeping those costs in line. We can do that with LED lights, we can do that with programming of our building HVAC control systems and lighting systems. We're going to continue to work towards attaining our goal, and this does align with our district goals to improve our environments, and we're always looking for different ways and creative ways to team up with our community and have the best use of our resources. Thank you. You have any questions?
Excellent presentation, thank you. Board members, questions, comments? No?
Jim, with your experience, what index ratio would you expect a new building to have? And can it be designed into it, or do you just take what you get?
It's, it's really hard to predict what a new building cost would be. When, when Val and I analyzed that, we took this building, we did square footage, we tried to look at some other things, we looked at some newer buildings and came with some figures, of course, that were lower than this building. It's tough to come up with an exact number when you're dealing with a brand-new building. Things change very quickly as far as the technology that drives some of the, some of the lighting and some of the programming things. To be very conservative, I, I would, I would think a newer building would be at least 20% more efficient than this one, and, and again, I tend to be on the conservative side.
Good question. Just a reminder to make sure board members are speaking into the microphone to ask these great questions. Margaret?
I have two questions, Jim.
Yes.
There. Is that better? Okay. I'm a little concerned with that low peer rating for the Northfield Middle School, because in my mind, it's a new building.
I know, yep, exactly.
So I'd like to hear more about why you think that is so low. My other question was in the Excel Energy contract, when they say subscription cannot exceed 10% of program energy output, tell me more about that.
I think the, well, the second question first. You can either subscribe by 100 kilowatt blocks, or you can have 100%, and for our consumption rates, which are low.
Okay, yeah.
Even though they're expensive, they are considered low compared to probably post. We could fit, and we bought in at an early time, too, and so we were one of the early purchasers or team members, so we are able to do the 100% instead of doing just certain blocks of it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And as far as the first question.
And I should preface it by saying I think you guys do an amazing job.
Well, thanks. And really, it's our electrician, Duke Bjorklund, I need to give him some recognition, he does an amazing job. A lot of it is the pool there. We have to heat the pool. Part of having an indoor pool is, especially in the winter, the, the water has to be warm, the air has to be warm, but the air has to also be exchanged frequently so that you don't have indoor air quality, poor indoor air quality issues. So basically, you heat a lot of air, blow it into a space, and draw it right back out again, and, you know, pools are resource hogs. They, they are just generally that way. The pumps run 24/7. The filters run, you know, everything is running 24/7.
So when it says a peer rating, does that mean compared to other middle schools with that enrollment, or does it mean compared to other schools with a pool?
It's building size and usage.
So some of these peers may not have a pool?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's, it's generalized, and a lot of it is by square footage. Pools, I can, I can get those specific answers for you to see how many of those buildings that we're compared to have a swimming pool.
Might, might give us a better.
Yeah, and again, this, that, there's an incredible amount of information on that B3 website. It's free for us, it's people, businesses spend thousands of dollars to have that type of information, so there's a lot of, of great knowledge on there for us to, to try and pour through. It's just sometimes difficult to, to frame it as you want it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great questions. Other questions? Amy?
Thank you for your report. Is this on? Okay. So I have several questions. I'm the new person, so I still figuring everything out. With the middle school, I think it's great that we're moving toward energy efficiency, and clearly we need to do that, and it needs to happen sometime. My question is, how many years will it take for us to make up the cost of the change by savings in electricity?
Awesome question, and if I would have had my glasses on, I had that answer for you. Our, the retrofit company that did our estimate, estimated, had we done their program, it would have been about a nine-year payback. With doing the work ourselves at a reduced rate, I figured we're at about three and a half year payback, so very well worth the money. That's, that's very fast, it is.
That's great. So good work on that. Then the other question I had was about this Renewable Connect at a glance. Does that actually cost us more money to be using renewable energy? I love renew, I'm a very environmentally conscious person, but we're always looking to save money. Does it cost us more money to be using renewables than it does if we were just?
It does, yep. There's, there's a slight increase in that.
So what was the thinking behind using renewables and why?
Well, we need to have those renewable resources, and people have to pay for those. If no one invested in those resources, there, there wouldn't be any of those resources, so we wouldn't see any wind turbines being put up because there would be no money to build them. It is slightly higher right now, and, which is why when I looked at the program, they have a month-to-month you could sign up for, they have a three-year, a five-year, and a 10-year. And although Excel cannot guarantee in writing a reduced rate, if, if we look at the history of our billing and the prepared pricing that they've set for us, after about four years is our break-even time. So any time after that four-year range is when we're going to be seeing payback on that and reduced costs. So it's, so it's an investment in our community and, and in our resources, and by investing long-term, we will reap the long-term benefits of being involved and, and savings at the end instead of right in the beginning. And the cost in the beginning, you know, and it varies by building usage. And the cost in the beginning, you know, and it varies by building usage. I think our monthly bills are about $2,000 more as a district whole to be involved with that right now. But as the years go by, that number gets lower and lower. And then, as I said, I anticipate after that fourth year is when we'll see our costs being less. And of course, it all depends, and this is why they can't guarantee savings, because they can't predict the future as far as the energy needs or the energy resources or just, you know, the world as a whole, the world economy, what's, you know, we could have another 2008 again where prices spike and all resources like that. Should anything like that happen, our rates are locked in for 10 years.
So I just want to make sure I can repeat this back. So you're expecting the rates to go down because, I'm hearing it two different ways. So maybe they're both right. Either the rates go down because there's more renewable energy available and the general cost for renewable energy goes down and we'll reap the benefits of that, or is it that we've locked in the rates and you're expecting energy rates in general to keep rising, but we've locked them in for 10 years? So halfway through, we're going to start realizing benefits?
The second part, you are correct. We've locked in our pricing. The pricing does increase as the years go by, but those are preset. That number is preset. And so if there is a spike in resources, we won't see that. We will pay what we subscribed for.
If there's a drop in prices, do we get anything?
No. But I really honestly can't remember the last time I've got a cheaper electric bill at my house. I'm not sure. Again, it's a 10-year. Like I've used the analogy before, I prefer to look at it as investing in saving bonds instead of playing the stock market with riding the wave. You know, it's more of a consistent.
And I appreciate the environmental consciousness of, and being able to save the school money at the same time.
Thank you.
So thank you for figuring all of that out and making it work out so we can help the environment and be good boards as far as.
Well, our goal is, you know, community stewardship. And again, it's, it is a little bit of an upfront cost, but, you know, I'm hoping that after that fourth year, we'll see some payback.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Board members, other questions? Jeff?
Thank you for your report. As a former student and a graduate of Northfield High School, one, I went to Longfellow through third grade and then fourth grade. When Greenville opened, I opened up Greenville. So I mean, I remember walking the halls of all those schools, obviously. The one question I have is, what are the lessons learned? Because obviously, it's very efficient. It's built well. It's a two-story. It's a bobschelter. It's got a high rating. What are the lessons of Longfellow?
Well, I think the lessons there are that, you know, I believe that's a great case to make for a building that can be remodeled and renewed. Because we've got, although we don't have LED lights in there quite yet, we do have the fluorescent lighting in there. We do have some outdoor LED lights. We do have all-new air handlers. And in that building also, the steam boilers are gone, and they're, we have the high-efficiency condensing boilers that heat that building. And they literally run on pennies to the dollar compared to generating steam, which is what the building had when it was new. So Longfellow, you've got an old brick-thick structure built to withstand just about anything. And you combine that, and the size of it, too. It's a smaller building, and it's compact. We've got a small footprint for that building because it's multi-level. And you combine that with some of the new technologies with the building control systems and those heating systems, and it's just a great combination. And that's why that building just rises to the top.
Well, and again, I guess it's the only question I have, but, you know, it'd be nice to have that same kind of format and, you know.
I'd love that.
That would have been nice to have that same two-story years ago here. But, you know.
Yep, I agree.
So we look forward. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Noel, you have a question?
I would tell the board that I had, for a company in Minneapolis, I had essentially the same job that Jim has here. And I would say, Jim, I'd be proud to make the report that you just did to the Board of Directors when I had the opportunity.
I'm very proud of my team. Thank you.
You should be. It can come from us.
Thank you.
Excellent. Board members, other questions? Do I know, Dr. Hulman, some comments?
Yeah, I just have a couple follow-ups here in terms of Jim. Can you just, in terms of going back to Amy's question about the upfront increase, but with the longer-term savings, could you just explain the retiring of credits that Excel does for us?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Because I think that's a really important part. And I'm going to preface this by saying.
It's a little complicated to explain. But yes, we do have, we have renewable energy credits. And what the meaning of those are is that anytime a windmill or a solar garden produces a renewable resource, it is labeled an energy credit. And by using those, by consuming those, by consuming that product in our spaces, those credits come back to us. So when we go for LEED certification in our buildings and things like that, and EnergyStar, those renewable energy credits are retired and used by the school district. They're not for use by any other company.
And I think this goes back to that from the time Jim came until we chose to go with Renewable Connect, I would say that every other week, we had someone contacting us about would we buy into a windmill group? Would we buy into a solar garden? Would we consider putting solar panels on our schools? In fact, to be frank, we are late to this game of energy efficiency in terms of renewable energy, excuse me, I misspoke, renewable energy. And part of it is we saw there was a little bit of peer pressure of schools because we'd get these vendors who would come in and say, well, such-and-such a district is doing this, or just down the road, they're installing their own solar garden. And when Jim and I and Val would work out the long-term, you know, financial forecast, we could never make the money work. And most of it is because while Jim, you know, is very transparent about the upfront increase to our Excel Energy Bill, it had been far more to have to have invested in the equipment. And then at the end of an equipment cycle, you have antiquated equipment that you either have, and of course, as a public entity, we just don't put that stuff out in the dumpster, right? We have a whole number of different pieces we would go through to get rid of that equipment. And so the key thing is, you know, we want to show our commitment to renewable resources. But we also want to do that in a way that we felt was the most fiscally responsible for the district. And while there is a slight increase, you know, district-wide to our bills upfront, there will be a payback in year four and ongoing. And then we have the benefit that when we get to year 20 of this, for example, and other school districts that have invested in their own solar equipment, they're going to have to go back out and purchase new equipment again. They're going to have to pay to have their original equipment recycled. And while I certainly see the value that other districts have in that visual communication to students in the community with those kinds of things on campus, we believe we can say to 100% of our energy that's being, electricity that's being used here every day is from renewable resources, and we have not committed ourselves to that 20-year equipment piece. And so, you know, Jim is pretty modest in terms of how we have approached this, but it's really been very good due diligence in terms of checking each vendor that came through and not just looking, again, what's it going to look like next week? It'll look like we're doing all this great renewable energy pieces. Yes, that would have sent a very nice visual to the community. But we can tell people, we have 100% renewable resources being used every day, and we've done it in what we believe, Val, Jim, and I, the most fiscally responsible way possible. Again, not just when you look out over the next couple of years. We actually try to take a long-term approach. And when you look at the long-term approach, we believe that this is the best. We had been waiting for this program because we had heard about it. We knew it was coming. And so I believe that our patience and Jim's understanding of the renewable energy market really is going to save us quite a bit of money when you look out in comparison over the next couple of decades.
Thank you, Dr. Hulman. And what I'd like to remind everyone, too, is that by teaming with Excel, we can also team and take advantage of all of their other programs, like all of those rebates that we've got over the years. I think we're at $150,000 plus just in rebates from them. And still, our guaranteed savings that we have by being a participant in their peak curtailment program, you know, that alone balances out the extra costs right now to be in the Renewable Connect. And we're still to the good as far as that goes, too.
Because to be clear, we wouldn't be able to participate in the curtailment if we had done some other kind of renewable resource.
Right. We would be at the prime rate for our electricity. Or, I'm sorry, the firm rate, which is what you all pay at home.
Excellent. Any further comments or questions? You know, I would just close, reiterate, Board Member Noel Stratmoat saying, thank you. This is really a great win for the district, and we appreciate you and your staff's work on this. So, excellent. Okay, so our next item for discussion, as a reminder, we added in the table file the last item for discussion, which is a recap of the December 4th work session and discuss next steps for the facilities plan. Dr. Hulman?
Yes, and so we just added this item to the agenda since it's going to be some time, you know, between now and the next time that we have a chance to talk about the work session. And just for folks at home, we did hold a work session last Monday night right in this very room. It was a two-hour work session solely focused on looking at the bond referendum that failed on November 7th. If you recall, we looked at some of the results by precinct. Board members had an opportunity to process and share what they heard about the bond referendum and the conditions that led to a majority of people voting against the bond referendum. Again, trying to learn in a continuous improvement effort, really debating those kinds of pieces and discussing what we had heard. And, you know, when we got down to the end, we really didn't take a significant amount of time to discuss our next steps forward. And so I thought what we would do tonight is just have an opportunity for any further reflection, you know, that people had. I'll start off by sharing what, as the administration, what we plan to do in our next steps to help make sure that we are reviewing the results of the bond referendum and looking forward in ways that we can address our facility's needs. And so at this point, what our plan would be is to, very soon, if you remember back when you adopted the Master Facilities Plan, one of the pieces that we intentionally put on hold was the bringing forward a facilities committee, just like we have a finance committee, just like we have the other committees that you sit on. And so what my job is right now is to execute forming that committee. Of course, Buildings and Grounds Director Jim Kolsath, you know, will be the lead on that committee from the staff side. What that will do is we plan to have that group meet several times a year. And of course, it isn't just about the bond referendum. It's about things like the energy efficiency piece that Jim had just shared. It would be things like the kind of investment that we made in our building to reap that ongoing cost savings. It would be other capital projects that the district, you know, is looking at in terms of providing us that community advisory on it. And of course, part of that will also be advising us on the facilities needs that had been proposed as part of the Master Facilities Plan. My plan would be to get that group together in January with, of course, Jim leading the charge there. At that point, after talking with them and getting that committee formed and the norms and all those kinds of things you would do with a standard committee, we would look at potentially engaging. One of the things I heard clearly from the work session was making sure we go back and engage the community again. And so one of the things that I would propose is that we would put together a working group to take specific look at the projects that are in the Master Facilities Plan, to review the bond, get their feedback. And I'm anticipating we'd see between, you know, anywhere between 25 and 30 members, good cross-section of the community, come in that would include the new facilities committee to work with Jim, myself, and Val Murdestorff, going through the facilities plan again, asking for people's feedback on, in terms of the unsuccessful bond referendum. Again, trying to really just do some analysis of what happened and how we think we could best chart our course forward with the community. My take would be at that point, after we've established that working group, that we do what we had done when we originally developed the Master Facilities Plan, that we again invite everyone within the school district community to come in and again engage in a chainsaw planning method, which I know the board members are familiar with that approach, in terms of reviewing the Master Facilities Plan and getting questions and things that people like about the plan, areas of question and things that people would like to have us look at, which could include various modifications to some of the approved projects. It could look at the timeline, you know, in terms of what we might be asking the community, getting that community feedback, again, in terms of as we move forward. That would then be a report that we could bring to you as a board like we have normally planned to do in late March, right? We said as part of the Master Facilities Plan, every year in late March, we would provide you with a report. We would also provide you with updated cost estimates on what the projects could, where the 5% to 7% of construction increase has not gone away. And we want to make sure that as we, as the Master Facilities Plan moves forward with some projects still on the table, that we know what those cost increases are each year so that people see on an annual basis that construction inflation being real and showing what those projected projects could increase over time. That committee could come back and share with you the information that they have learned through this additional community engagement. And then we have some other tools in our toolbox, right? We talk at length at the work session about a potential scientific community survey. I think that the decision point, that that would be toward the end of that community-wide engagement in terms of we may learn enough that you feel that that's not a necessary piece to move ahead with. There may be some very finite and specific questions that we would like to know the answers to from a representative group of the community in order to help you make any decision about what next steps, if any, you might take in terms of addressing the Master Facilities Plan. So I intently listened to all of you at the work session. I think it's my job to bring forward to you what I think the next course of action would be. We want to be very clear that this is a, the bond issue is an example of direct democracy. We asked the question of the community, and we received a very clear answer that they were not ready at this time to support the Master Facilities Plan as we had presented it. And we are stewards of our democracy, so it's our job to listen to that, to try to make sense of the election and what the electorate is telling us, and then to come back and look at what are the next steps that we could do that would, number one, impact our students and their learning environment and their ability to fully engage in their educational opportunity that has no rewind for them, right? We don't, we can't rewind child's education. But also to make sure that we know what we can bring forward that we think that the community could support. So I wanted to, just to share with you my synthesis of the work session and what I heard to be possibly the best next action steps. We're not asking for any kind of vote tonight because this is the kind of work that I do on your behalf, but I just wanted to offer an opportunity for people to discuss that approach and then addition any other further reflections that people had after our work session last Monday.
Excellent recap. Thank you, and good articulating steps moving forward. Board members, comments? Ellen?
So I guess what I like, what I've heard is that when we had our work session, you know, we talked about the scientific survey as a possible tool of trying to, and the data we have from the election. And what I liked about this is that we're addressing the community engagement in a different way and some of the same methods that we've used in the past. So we continue to reach out as broad as we can, not just having select group, but to make it like we had in the past, but not, we realized that last time we did that, we had umpteen meetings and people didn't feel engaged. So instead, kind of having this core group, and then that core group gets expanded to a working group that'll, and then, I guess my one question in trying to clarify, and you're nodding, so I think I'm getting all this, is in terms of the facilities group and the working group, if we have some strategies, I know with Northfield Forward, formerly known as DPAC, that there, that there were some sort of strategies for ensuring that we had sort of representation from different sorts of groups. And I'm imagining that we would have something similar here, so that would be, I guess, the question I have. But I really like the idea of this, and I like that we're going after that community engagement.
Yeah, and just to be clear about, again, we have, we, I'm not going to say that we feel we've learned the secret sauce yet, but I think we're getting closer. If you think about the School Board Finance Committee, if you think about Northfield Forward, formerly known as DPAC, I think one of the key things is that we have learned about is, number one, we want to have a representative group of the community to the best of our abilities. So being intentional about looking at the different, for lack of a better term, segments of the community and trying to be very intentional about how we can reach out to have as, as close to a representative group within a reasonable number of people as possible. The second piece is to make sure that there is a plan for people to rotate on and off. One of the things that I think we have found is key, especially on, that we've seen real success with the Finance Committee, is when we set that up, every year, two people rotate off. And the reason is that we want to make sure that people feel that we can get more people committed if they know that it is not something that they're going to have to do for the rest of their natural-born life, right? That they can be on the committee for a period of time, and then they cycle off. But there's always enough people on there who have historical knowledge to be able to train or basically onboard the new committee members, and then people take their turn. Because facilities are a little bit different, I anticipate a little bit larger, not quite as large as Northfield Forward, but larger than our Finance Committee. So I think those key, and then the third piece that we have found, which is very significant, is identifying, there are annual tasks every year that both of those committees do. And we have identified those standard agenda items. So for example, every December, in our Finance Advisory Committee, it's even November, end of December, they look at the presentation that you saw tonight. They have an opportunity to see that and provide any feedback to Val before we present that publicly. Because again, it's a representative group of people who have some expertise in this area, some people who don't, who give more of a layperson's perspective. area, some people who don't, who give more of a layperson's perspective to give feedback on the work that we plan to bring to you. That's just one example. We would anticipate the same thing would happen with the Facilities Committee. One example would be coming up here in December, we have our annual capital meeting. And the capital decision-making team is made up of principals and other directors within the district. Before that meeting, Jim will most likely be meeting, not this year, but moving forward, Jim would be meeting with the Facilities Committee. He'd be reviewing the 10-year plan. He'd be saying, here are the projects that are up for this coming year. I anticipate an annual tour of the facility so that the Facilities Committee has a chance to see both the above-board and below-board parts of the facility every single year. And they have an opportunity to say, you know, yes, the 10-year plan is still on track, or you know what, this might be a higher priority this year than we had anticipated because of some of the things that we've seen. So every year in October or November, that would be a standard item for the Facilities Committee. Those kinds of things, making sure there's a standardized agenda that every year, the same things are being looked at. And then of course, from time to time, there will be items that will come up that will be unique to that year or unique to that time. But I think, Ellen, I really appreciate you referencing Northfield Forward because just through a few meetings this year, we've gotten really good feedback about the reboot of that committee. And again, making sure there's a large number of people from a cross-section of the community, making sure that there's a standard agenda that we know is going to be there, so no one's having to think, well, what should we do at this meeting? You know, it's, we know the things, and then if we have to add things, we certainly can. So that's how I anticipate, and I hope that that has given you a little bit more context.
Excellent. Amy?
I think you've answered some of my questions, but I just want to make sure I understand.
I'm working on anticipating questions.
That's great. So there'd be a core facilities committee, and that would be made up of staff of Northfield?
So there would be some staff members on that committee, as well as several community members.
Okay, and then there would be a larger working committee. Would the larger, so the core committee is a permanent committee?
Correct.
The larger working committee, would that just be an ad hoc committee?
That's correct.
For the process of whatever's coming next?
Correct. We would have a defined term there. So again, people know that their job would be to help analyze that facilities plan and give the board some feedback on the current plan, areas to consider modifying, timelines, things like that.
So, and I guess what I'm sort of interested in is for that larger working committee to make sure that we have a sense of the skill sets we are looking for, for people on that committee, and that we find a way of reaching out as broadly as possible to the community and to find those skill sets and to bring in fresh voices and ideas to the whole process. And I know that can be, you know, we'd have to be creative in how we, how we found these volunteers and be very proactive in really making sure that we're getting the skills we need and getting people involved who can bring new ideas to the process.
I completely agree. And I also think a diversity of skill set, you know, in terms of, my anticipation is we'd have a handful of people who might be experts in the construction industry, a handful of people who may have some architectural background, some people with some finance background. In fact, we might leverage our Finance Committee in terms of asking if some of those folks might serve on this committee. We also want a number of people who maybe don't have those specialized skills because they need to hear it as the layperson, you know, in terms of giving feedback from maybe not an expert point of view. That's actually one of the most valuable things that we've learned over time is people who don't have that curse of knowledge but are able to look at something through fresh eyes because you're able to gauge some feedback. But that has to be, that can be the whole group, right? But that's got to be a specific portion. I think also people coming from a different taxpayer backgrounds, right? In terms of making sure that we have enough people who own a significant rural property, you know, in terms of making sure they're able to give us that kind of feedback, as well as business owners and general homeowners. So, you know, again, when you look at a 25 or 30-person committee, you have the ability to get that kind of representation. And we'll, of course, in this particular piece, we'll certainly take, you know, thoughts from board members, and I'll be asking our traditional outlets in terms of asking them for feedback in terms of names to identify. And of course, you know, if you want 25 or 30 people, you probably need to have 45 or so names in terms of be able to get people to commit to, what I'm anticipating would be between four and six meetings that we would do. And then I think the other thing that we've learned is that I think people know that we have really tried very hard to be very inclusive in all of the community engagement that we've done over the past several years. But we've also learned that it has not been enough to this point. And the one, one of the few things that we have not done has been direct mail. We've used the Northfield News. Philip and team have been very good about making sure that people knew about the meetings that we had. But again, not everyone reads the local newspaper. Jeff Johnson, Terry Knight at KYMN have been outstanding in making sure that they publicize, you know, those kinds of public meetings. We've used the website. We've used the kinds of things that we can get at for our families. But we now realize we also need to do, when we ask community to come in, and I'm not talking about the committees right now, I'm talking when we get these public meetings, we are going to have to spend some money, a little bit of money. It's not going to be anything fancy, a, you know, white and black, you know, very simple card that goes out to tell people we're having this series of meetings, and we are able to invite folks. Because again, not everyone in the district reads the newspaper, not everyone looks at our website, not everyone gets our emails. You know, there's a social media strategy that we're going to be looking at in early January and into February. But we also know that direct mail tied with some of these other things actually probably, everybody went away from direct mail, you know? But now, when you talk to people who really know about engaging people, that direct mail, despite it being a nominal cost, when you think about the overall part of our budget, we're going to have to go back to that in strategic places. You know, and this is not something we do every time, but in strategic places. In fact, we are strategically using the Community Services Bulletin. If you got your brochure, take a look at page number 53, because we have our first district update. Now, we're going to try to make that have a more prominent spot in the brochure as we move forward, and we're going to plan to expand to a couple of pages. But that's another way that we can engage the community. For those of you who are at one of our public meetings, that was something one of our rural township citizens said, we really need to hear more from you. And when we look back and we looked at all the work that we did, we realized, we said, you know what, that is a segment of our community that despite all of the efforts probably did not get all of the information that we had such good intentions of getting out there. But I think as we've said, sometimes you win and sometimes you learn. And in this case, we learned from the vote, and everything that we can do and learn from this experience, we will. And direct mail is one way that we'll also make sure we engage the broader community.
Thank you.
It won't be fancy, it's not going to be in multi-colors or anything like that, but just to be clear.
Excellent. Okay, other questions, comments?
Noel?
Follow up on what Dr. Hillman said. It's probably the area of further reflections.
Noel, can you pull the microphone, because we want to be sure we hear you and the...
All right.
Thank you.
It's further reflections and probably somewhat of a history lesson. When I came on the board, there'd been a handshake dating back to about 1967 or '68 that said the city and the rural should represent, be represented in the direction of the district. And I would certainly need, think, and support Dr. Hillman and others that we need to work at making sure that can happen. We need to clearly include all the taxpayers and representatives in the district's direction. So I hope that we can accomplish that in near future. Thank you for leading us on that, Dr. Hillman.
It's a privilege.
Excellent comments. Board members, other comments?
I just had a few, because I really appreciated the opportunity to come back and really talk about it, because I think, you know, we all, we get together and we all listen to each other, and then we go home and we sort of think about what was said. And I appreciated the December 4th workshop, work session. I think it was a great opportunity for us to dialogue. And, you know, we had disappointing results, but I just really sensed the optimism that we have and the direction that we are, we're moving forward. What I also appreciated was how the board members were really intentional about reaching out to the community members that we interact with in terms of trying to understand where, you know, we fell short. And so I think that we all heard from our different segments of the community that we interact with, but we clearly didn't get a consensus in terms of where, you know, where we fell short. And I was most really energized by Ellen's remarks of our own community engagement and what we need to do there and the important work we have moving forward. And I think part of what Dr. Hillman is presenting is really developing a comprehensive plan to really move forward with that. And I think we have some pieces of that formulated, but I think we understand that that's a really significant challenge. The other thing that we discussed was the master facilities plan, and we talked about reaffirm or reassess. And I think what Noel Strathmon said so eloquently is we got rejection, but not necessarily direction. And I think that's where, what we will do moving forward is getting the direction on the master facilities plan and really with the overarching goal of the strategic plan, determining how we move forward with the master facilities plan. And at this point, you know, we don't know if we reaffirm, but we are in the process of reassessing and then we move forward. So I really appreciated the work around, the discussion around the master facilities plan. I think as Noel also mentioned at that meeting, we have a serious dilemma with the high school and how we move forward. And I think, again, the outline that Dr. Hillman has presented in terms of determining how we move forward, I think is really excellent. So I think that was all my recaps in terms of what I heard fellow board members saying, what I appreciated most about the work session and the opportunity for us to come together and really sort of debrief, but then have this opportunity tonight to really reflect on what we heard from each other, which I think we had really some excellent opportunity that we had learned from each other and how we move forward. So I appreciate Dr. Hillman's outlining next steps. Ellen, you had a comment?
I just had one comment.
Yeah.
So thinking about what you had just said, Julie, what I really like about it too is that I know from being at the referendum public hearings, people would ask, what's your Plan B? And it's, no, this is, this is what we're putting out to the voters. And I think it's really entirely appropriate now that the lesson that we are learning from this is finding other ways to engage the community and we don't presume a Plan B instead. This is, our Plan B is engage in the community in the next steps. And I think, you know, I think Dr. Hillman, I guess, and Julie, I really appreciate that thoughtfulness of this.
Excellent. So with great optimism and momentum moving forward, we will...
And I think the humility to listen.
Yeah.
You know, I think that that's the key thing, you know, in terms of when we go back, there's a lot of strategies that we are going to use that we have used before, because they are good strategies. The way that we invite people, the way that we relentlessly invite people to the table, I think is not necessarily going to be different, but it's going to be intentional and intentionally looking at who is showing up. And if we don't believe that we have the group that we need to get that so that you have the feedback, then it's my job to make sure that we keep reaching out to everyone to have them inform you before you were to decide to bring anything back to the public. So I think that that's the key piece, is that we will certainly be reaching out with humility with some of the same strategies we've used before, but also augmenting them in a way that makes sure that we can continue to get a broader range of feedback.
Excellent. Any final questions or comments? Okay. Excellent, thank you. So we will, that does take care of our items for discussion and report this evening, so we will move on to items for individual action. Our first item is the certification of the final 2017 payable 2018 property tax levy. So is there a motion to certify the county auditors, this 2017 payable 2018 final certified levy limitation and certification report in the amount of $19,256,128.89? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. So we, as board members, now have the opportunity for questions or comments regarding this motion. Any questions or comments? Rob?
I have a question about tax capacity, if you could answer that.
I'll try.
So the, what you said, there was a, the tax, total tax capacity was 22,838,876 or something like that? We're asked to certify 19,251.28. So what I'm wondering is, so that, the difference between the tax capacity and what we're certifying is like roughly $3.6 million. Does that mean that there's only $3.6 million for other entities to tax? Or, I mean, what's the relationship between the county and the city taxes and the tax capacity?
So the county has a different jurisdiction and a different tax capacity because they're their entire county. Ours are only the school district properties.
So that 22 is only for the school district?
It's just our, our property, yeah. So the Faribault School District has a separate taxing jurisdiction, net tax capacity. Rice County has an even larger one because it's all of Rice County. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
And then explain, I know there was like a formula, but just remind me the formula for the difference between our authorized maximum levy and the tax capacity.
Um...
Because we're not, we can't take the whole, we're not taking the whole 22.8 million, so...
So the tax capacity is all of the estimated market values times their class rate as defined by statute added up together. So a $200,000 home is $2,000 with net tax capacity.
Right.
Okay? So all of that added together is $22 million. And then they take that, our tax levy divided by our total tax capacity to get basically a rate. So then whatever your, your class rate, net tax capacity gets multiplied. So we're collecting $19 million, and it's distributed based on that calculation, which is driven by the state and how they, and the, you know...
And statute.
Your property was a set stat, yeah.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, or not really?
Kind of. In that, there was that pie chart that had 56% was the referendum.
Mm-hmm.
So without the referendum, what would our, how much would we be getting?
So our referendum is, let me just find that. I have it here somewhere. I want to say it's like 8.2 million. I can pull it up here. I'm pretty sure it's about 8.2 million.
Okay.
So we'd still be, you know, the difference between that and the 19...
It's like 44% of the...
Uh, no, the referendum, so 8.2 million is 52% roughly of our, of our 19 million that we're, that doesn't work, but...
It's probably a little bit bigger, a little bit more than that.
Yeah. I can pull it up here quick.
Can you clarify what you just said?
So he was asking how much our referendum is in total. If I can get this to work, I will tell you. I didn't bring that particular page with all the detail.
We know you have it, Mel. It's just a matter of finding it.
Yeah, I do have it. It's, you know, a 39-page document, so...
Well, there's no, no concern that you don't know this or have this.
52%, yeah. So let me pull up, I just want to see what I button, oh, this thing isn't working. It's not letting me connect to my network drive. We'll see if this works.
Val, would that 8.2 have been of the preliminary levy? Because that's about 52% of the 17 million. And then if you add on the additional 1.9, you're at about 10 million, which is about 52%.
That could be, I'm just looking here, so I, okay, now it's like... So I, okay, now it's letting me do it.
This is the time I feel the need to say, talk amongst yourselves.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, no worries.
No.
It's fine. It's a good question and we know Val will get the answer, so.
Except where is my, it's always harder to do things on my laptop than... Where's my... So I have the total referendum at 10,245.90 in the pie chart that's in my presentation. So if I go back, look at the detail. Oh, I bet you it's this. Okay. So I have included, so in the pie chart, I did the total of the referendum market value. So the 10,024,590, so, which is, includes the local optional revenue. So that's a little misleading. I didn't, those are both, the 10 million is what's spread on the referendum market value tax capacity. So if we do, it is, our actual referendum revenue is 8 million. And so if I do that divided by the 19, it's about 41.6%. So, sorry about that.
Good question.
But I think that the key thing is those are the statutory categories and the local optional revenue has a couple of different ways that it has, because there's part of it which is aid and part of, which is, part of which is the levy component, which we're talking about here.
Yep. But both of those, I, if you look at the category breakout, the referendum market value, I'm probably looking at the wrong one again. Yep. Many presentations I printed out, I think should be the 10,024, yeah, 24,590.01. So I just took that whole tax base, not just the referendum. So that was a typo on my part. It's 41.6. Is that helpful? Was that answering your question?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm interested in how much of this is voter approved, how much of this is...
Yep. So the, of the, so on the...
Property tax levy breakout?
Yep. So the voter approved is that bottom section there. So 13,196,526.35 is voter approved. So 69% of our total levy is voter approved. And 31% is state authorized levies.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
Yeah. And can you, you mentioned, both of you mentioned local optional revenue. Could you explain that again?
So local optional revenue, they, was the change in statute that they did about three, three years ago, four years ago, where we had, we had a capped per pupil referendum amount and they took $424 off of that and made it state approved. So it effectively lowered our operating referendum, if that makes sense. So that's what that is.
And they did some equalization with that. There were some other pieces that, where we got the same amount of money at the time, but it actually cost the taxpayers a little bit less.
More of it came in state aid.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. So my question is on the levy history?
Mm-hmm.
And this is just a curiosity for me.
Sure.
So our percent change for pay 18 is 23.62%.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way to easily find out if we, if the increased levy hadn't passed, what that percentage?
11.34. It would have been what our preliminary was in September. Yep. Because the only change between September and the final was the voter approved increase.
Great.
And a slight decrease in our equity revenue, but that's because the referendum increased.
And there had been essentially no increases for the previous, or minimal for the previous four years?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Other questions?
I had one question, Val, and I'm not sure if you can even, if you have this information, but we were talking about, you pointed to the increase in tax capacity, which is 6.5% this year, as a function of increased property values as well as additional taxable parcels. And you talked about the number of different, you know, coding and whatever, but do you have a sense for the aggregate increase of taxable parcels, whether it be business or residence or?
So I did, I did talk to Paul Knudsen today for a little while, the Rice County Assessor. And they have a report on their website that they do in June that kind of breaks down a lot of that, but most of it is at a county level, not necessarily just for our school district property tax base. So it's a little hard to, he didn't really have specifics. He did say that our downtown historic commercial properties saw a pretty significant increase in their valuation. There were lots of sales in downtown over the last year and they are required by the state to have a sales ratio between 90 and 100, 90% and 105%. So that was a pretty significant increase. But I think the, when I looked at the, the things that they did have broken out by city, so the residential average sale price went from 209,000 in Northfield to 207,000. And they had some parcel information, but again, it wasn't, the year over year, I think, was, so in 2016, we had 29,807 parcels and in 2017, we had 29,801 parcels. So it's actually six parcels less. But there's not a breakout of what, you know, what that looks like. So he didn't have a lot of real specific information for our particular tax base, but...
Sure. So his report was for, so that the DEX report would be in June?
Yep.
Okay.
So they, so this is their 2017 report. So they, they set those, the values that were, that you saw in your November that you, that's all set in the spring. And so they do this report in June then.
Okay.
If I can point out, you know, this time of year, Val's phone starts to ring a bit. And in many years, this year is different, of course, because we have a voter approved operating levy that's responsible for a substantial portion of the overall levy increase. But every year, Val gets a number of questions about why people's home values went up. And of course, we don't have control over that. That is something that happens by the county assessor. And people do in the spring get the proposed assessment for their property. And I think it's one of those things that, because it's not a bill, I think a lot of people actually just put it in a drawer or maybe recycle it. And then when they get to their tax bill, they then see the impact of that increased assessment. And at this point of the year, my understanding is the only way to modify that is to go to Tax Corp. So I just really encourage residents, when they get that assessment from the county in the spring, if there's a substantial difference and you have concerns about it, you know, please make sure to contact the county assessor's office. I've talked to, I've talked to a number of business people in town who actually did that. And the assessor came out to their property, really listened to their questions, looked at their building and then explained, you know, there are a number of different pieces that are beyond their control that happen at the state level in terms of the percent that you have to be within the median sale price. But for people who have a concern about a significant increase in their valuation, which of course leads to a higher tax bill, the time unfortunately is not now, you know, to do that, the time is in the spring. And so I know that there's a number of businesses that, as we had heard, saw a significant valuation increase. I know there's a lot of buzz within the community about, I imagine that Mr. Knudsen's phone is going to ring a little bit next spring. But I think it's just really important for people to remember that that's not something that the school district controls, but you have an opportunity to make sure that you ask some questions about that in the spring when the assessor makes any determination.
Okay, great. Any questions or final questions? I just had one comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Rob, go ahead.
This is probably a theoretical question here. So you talked about the, how the district taxpayers are kind of making up the difference that the state is not made to keep up with inflation. If, if the state were to take over that responsibility and pay that amount, it would mean that we would have to ask local taxpayers for less in property taxes, right? That money is coming, the money that the state is giving us is coming from income taxes. I mean, so the question is, which is the fairer way of paying, what has the least impact on?
Do we have two hours or three hours?
I would say that I'm not 100% sure how the state manages their budget, but...
I don't think anyone is.
I would anticipate that to be the case. So I would, I would picture it similar to ours. They have multiple sources of income and, you know, they look at that, their revenue projections against what their expenditure projections are and try to have a balanced budget, the same the way that we do. So I can't say that the money that we get is directly from income taxes or, you know, that's part of their balanced budget process. But in terms of if the state were to, you know, increase their contribution, we, you know, we would not need the same amount of property tax revenue to continue to maintain our programming. But how that budget works at the state level is obviously out of our control, but...
Yeah. I'm just thinking that there are things like the property valuation that comes from the county. But part of the problem is that the state is not paying adequately for schools and that if they were paying adequately, there would be less of an impact on local taxpayers, probably.
Yes. And then I think the other thing that plays into the differences with income taxes versus property taxes is there's statewide inadequate system because we saw it this fall with our, our proposed bond. You know, St. Louis Park had a $100.9 million bond that costs their taxpayers ha, less than half of what 109 would cost our taxpayers. So the, the way that the taxes and the class rates and those things for districts that have more agricultural property is just more expensive. We have a smaller commercial property base than St. Louis Park. You know, so there's those just general inequities that happen when you're looking at a property tax base.
I think there's some, oh, sorry.
Ellen, go ahead.
That's, it's a comment, not a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. No.
So I was going to say this for our next item, but because it seems to relate more to what Rob was asking, I really appreciated with looking at the truth in taxation of also looking at the amended budget and how you had really clearly laid out some of the fund budget amendments and gave us a sense of what is happening with their spending. And it comes back to, like Rob was asking, at the state level, you know, we have, we don't have a choice that our things increase, right? You know, we have the benefits that we need to pay, that we've made an agreement with. We have the, we appreciate, you know, the, what Benjamin Bus does and the transportation increases are continuing in the electricity and we appreciate the cost savings, but we don't have any choice in those increases, even though the state isn't keeping up with inflation. And the other piece, I guess I wanted to bring up is that the federal level too, you know, we had, when Representative Klein was still in office, he said, he came and said, well, if you want to do anything at the federal level, tell us to take care of special ed and, you know, that would solve a lot of your budget issues. And we see that again with, you know, we want to do right by those kids and we've seen it again and again where Dr. Hillman has to have to come in Cheryl and let us know that we need to, you know, we have these, these expenses that we, we want to take care of and, and we aren't getting the federal money either. So I really appreciated having both the general fund budget amendment, those pieces clearly laid out as to the things that are beyond our control that we want to do right by our kids. And I think that was helpful to see with the, what we're authorizing for the levy, that this is why we have to, you know, we are great, you know, grateful for our taxpayers' willingness to, to vote this through because we don't have a choice on these expenses. So.
Excellent comment. Jeff?
I would say, I mean, you're getting into Pandora's box when you start talking about taxes, period. But I mean, it should be, it should be that this state of confusion for everything. I mean, we've got federal, we've got state, we've got county, we've got city and we've got school districts, so, you know, townships. So it's kind of like, everyone's kind of in there for the big tax grab. And then one of the things to understand about Northfield is, you know, an LGA is a total other topic. I mean, you take a town like Northfield where you've got, you know, 40% of the town doesn't pay taxes. You've got Carlton and St. Wolf in there and you've got the churches. That's a big chunk. You know, those are protected by our constitution and different things. So I think, and I hate the opportunity, when people say that the, you should run for, run for state rep if you want to say that the, that the state government or talk to your state rep is not running, is not paying enough taxes. Or whatever it is, I mean, take that on the state level. I mean, we're here to set policy and do whatever we're doing and then go ahead and lobby whoever you want on that. But, I mean, I think that there needs to be, again, even on a cost, and I've talked to Matt about this, on a cost per pupil, where do we compare to other school districts? I think we match up really well with, with one that we talked about is New Prague. I mean, and where do we keep going up, up, up? Everything goes up. What is, what is responsible spending? And as we had that consultant in the other day, I said, you know, what, you know, what is, what are, you're basically, your question is, a good question, and it's basically a tax cap. You're saying like, what is responsible? And I'm thinking, you know, responsible taxation of, you know, what is the cap within that statement? Everyone gets that statement from the county and they're looking at that, trying to understand whether you're a senior or you're wealthy or you're whatever else. You know, what, how do we as a community, how do we as a school board, how do we as leaders try to, you know, get what we're going to get as responsible as we can as far as the cash grab, you know, from, and how do you have the education process of, you know, having a seminar, webinar, get together where we sit down with people and say, hey, go bring your tax statement in here. We're going to have, we've got representatives from the county here, the state, the whatever else, and we're going to tell you how this works and we're going to educate you and we're going to talk to you and say, understand, you know, what are you paying in part of your, you know, your county, your city, your whatever else? And I mean, all of those things go in and briefly, when I talked to Dr. Richardson, you know, years ago, and we were talking about all this stuff and with all this coming up, and I said, I said, do cities and school districts talk when they're really going to have bonding issues and going out there or do they just go out and ask for what they're going to ask? And he said, no, they just usually go out there and ask. So if we don't have some coordination of what's coming up on a schedule for big deals like, you know, bonds, which you had the same year, I mean, you had the senior center was built the same year as what? The middle school? That was a, that was a thing where you end up where a lot of people for taxes, especially if you're in the city, you get the double whammy. You get the double whammy from, from the school district and you get the, the city. So I mean, a lot of that other ones in. And, you know, then you're talking about a school district, which is a little bit bigger and then you get the county. So it is very complex and I think what we want to do a little bit is somehow take the pain and frustration out of that process with people. And I think we do that by educating. And that's putting people in the same room together and talking about the issue. So anyway, that's my rant. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a couple here. Number, I just wanted to make sure that, to be clear, I think that the consultant that you were talking about was our auditor. Just, just to make sure we're clear.
Well, no, yeah, it was, it was, I said, who gets to decide what, you know, and basically the answer to that was if we're getting 70% of our money from the state, that's the state money, who gets to decide whatever the 30% is? Well, the answer to that and that the consultant was, if you're saying that, is the taxpayer. You know, so we...
And I just want to be clear that, you know, that audit is something required to do every year, you know, in terms of they come into analyze, that was just, I was trying to be clear, Jeff, is it...
That wasn't, that wasn't, the auditor was talking about, when we had all of these work sessions of that and we had the consultant from, was it Ailer's or was it work?
Okay, from Ailer's, yes.
Yeah, coming in and it's like, well, who gets to decide what the tax rate is? And basically, you know, you can ask and put a responsible ask out, which, which is what we really did, we thought we did and we've got the data back. And I love your quote here, this is awesome, is, you know, we got rejection, but we didn't get direction. I mean, that is, that is great. So we've got, I mean, nobody likes to get rejected, but now we've got a lot of data. Now how can we go back and come back with a responsible ask for, you know, what we think the need is?
I was just trying to make sure I clearly understood the consultant.
Okay, I got you. So, all right. Thank you.
And I just, the piece, I just want to thank Val because, you know, we have an outstanding finance department and it is, you know, when you talk about school finance and the things that Rob brought up, it's incredibly complex. You know, Minnesota uses property taxes as the main piece, but you go to other states, they do use income tax. Some states actually use sales tax. I think there's even one state that uses the lottery, you know, to fund some of their school finance pieces. So when you look across the nation, there's a number... So when you look across the nation, there's a number of different philosophical ways that people fund school districts. One of the arguments for the property taxes, it's one of the more stable pieces that you have in terms of reliability, not large swings. But again, that's a philosophical piece, you could spend a lot, and I think people, you know, that we've had several governors appoint work groups to try to look at this. And invariably, what happens is it gets shelved because people's heads start to hurt, you know, about what's needed. However, I also want to point out, I'm so thankful for the work that Val and our finance department has done because we are looking at a legislative session where the forecast says a hundred and eighty-eight million dollar deficit. And with a two point one billion dollar surplus, we could not even get an inflationary increase to the per pupil basic formula. So I'm guessing that that's not going to be an option with a hundred and eighty-eight million dollar deficit either. So I think through the generosity of the voters and through really good financial stewardship, you know, by the people at this table and people who have come before us, we are in a position to, I think, weather what I think could be a, a substantial fiscal storm at the state level for the next foreseeable future. And we will wait, you know, everyone says wait until the March forecast, the February forecast, it gets reported in March. But what I'm hearing from legislators right now is with that hundred and eighty million dollar projected deficit, I don't think they're going to even put a budget together until March, you know, which is a month into the session. And so, you know, we often talk about legislative priorities and I think it's important to talk about that. I basically have one legislative priority right now, which is to make sure the legislature doesn't pass anything that costs us more money without the prerequisite funding to go along to support that. And in a year when they have no money to spend, what do they talk about? They talk about policy. And everyone talks about policy as if it doesn't cost money. Everybody at this table knows every time that there's a policy provision passed, it costs the school district money. And normally, it costs us quite a bit. So I think that we're, the budget revision is an excellent piece because it brings, it brings all the known quantities to the table, which is very important. Sometimes we'll even do another budget revision, but I think that what that shows the board and the community is that we are reviewing this on a regular basis. This is not something that we set it and forget it, right? We set it and we're analyzing it on a monthly basis and we're bringing you at least one budget revision per year. And that the fact that we're very, we're very thankful to our generous community who continue to step in where the state has not been able to. So Val and your team, just a couple times a year, you get some thanks and this is one of those evening's.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so great questions and comments. Just to remind board members, we do have a motion to certify county auditors, the 2017 payable 2018 final certified levy limitation. So with a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the second item for individual action, which was also a part of the presentation. So is there a motion to approve the revised 2017-18 general fund budget revenues of fifty million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and ninety-three dollars and expenditures of fifty-one million four hundred and eighteen and fifty-two dollars, four and eighteen thousand and fifty-two dollars? Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or comments on the 2017-18 general fund budget revisions? I just have echo Ellen's comments regarding the narrative that we received and how detailed it is. And I know, I think Val is a, a great example of process of continuous improvement because she's always looking for new ways to present this. It's, as we know, it's very complex. It's, and I know that you have some thoughts even going forward about ways you want to continue to be able to articulate and do such an excellent job of summary. So we appreciate that and your ongoing efforts to continue to, to very succinctly explain this to not only the board, but the general public. So thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Third item for individual action is the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours in which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. As you know, we discussed this as part of our December fourth work session, but obviously did not take any action, so that is the action we will take tonight. So is there a motion to approve the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election? All those, are, a motion to approve? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Rob. So the resolution included in your packet actually detailed the polling locations. So are there any questions or comments regarding the recommendation there that we will be approving? Ellen?
I was just hoping that we had some context during our work session that I think would be really helpful for the public about that we had these different options. I really appreciate the option that the superintendent is recommending, but maybe, maybe you already intended to sort of put that in context for us.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do so. So just to reiterate that this is to comply with new state law that is in effect for this year. And so every school district, all three hundred and thirty-two of them in the state of Minnesota are required to adopt a set of combined polling places in the event that they might have to have a special election. Now, not, very few school districts have a special election every year. We're not anticipating on having a special election in 2018, but every year from here on out, we're required to make this adoption. And so I just want to really emphasize that this is not something that we're doing saying we're thinking about having a special election. Every school district's required to do this from here on out. So we had looked at a number of different things and we really listened to some of the voter feedback that we even had with this last election. And so what we have proposed are eight polling locations. So the eight polling locations would basically do a little bit more combination within the city. So in a normal city election, there would be two precincts within each ward in the city. The proposal that you have in front of you would combine each of the city's wards into one precinct in the event there was a special election. In the general, or in the election that we just had, we only had three rural combined polling places. Based on some feedback from some voters, we are proposing four combined polling places so we can geographically split some of the north-south piece in, in one of the combined polling places. So city voters who, in a regular standard election, would have eight locations and a special election would have four. And then rural polling places, which this last time had three, would actually have four combined locations, again, based upon some of the feedback that we've gotten and also trying to make it a little bit simpler for people to get to the polls. Is that the kind of context you're looking for?
Yeah, excellent summary. So based on that, is there questions or comments? Noel?
Can this information be put on maybe the website so the public can be able to see what we just are going to do?
Yep, it'd be part, it's already on the website, actually, so it's part of the board packet, yeah.
And again, this is just in the event of a special election, but no, we're not anticipating that for the 2018 calendar year. Okay. I just have a comment. I think you did, your work here was, was really, really good and I think you came up with an excellent, an excellent plan in terms of, again, we're not anticipating, but I think it, it really, is a, is a really good plan in terms of the number of rural polling sites and, and the fairness with, balanced against the city polling sites.
And I'd just like to thank, you know, Danita Delzer, who's our resident expert on that, as well as Val Murdestor, who collaborates. And then, of course, Deb Little of the city. You know, she is just this fountain of information and she's very helpful in trying to analyze this kind of thing as well.
Well, and, yeah, we haven't had to, you know, do this type of, of work before. We've actually had to, to do that and, and place it, you know, and get it documented. So I think it was really good work and I think you came up with a really good plan. So we appreciate that. So we do have a motion and a sex, and a second regarding the resolution establishing combining polling places. This is a roll call vote. Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Palangolo?
Aye.
Fennell?
Aye.
Stafford?
Aye.
And Kurtcher?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. So with that, we can move on to consent grouping. There was just a couple of items, personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, in your packet was the enrollment report. Dr. Hillman?
So in the packet, you have the December one enrollment report. And what you'll see is that we are getting into that cruising altitude of the year. The full-time students excluding early childhood and part-time independent study ALC students is at four thousand two, slightly down from last month, although you'll see the actual grand total, including those, has actually increased a little bit. And of course, that four thousand two are students here that are here and, and programs excluding early childhood and independent study or ALC. And of course, that other number includes those and is important for the various calculations that Val had been making mention of tonight as part of the truth in taxation and the budget revision. So we are right, right on schedule and actually, we've even been a little bit more conservative in our enrollment as you see that the total is just slightly higher than what Val was projecting in the revised budget.
Excellent. Any questions on the enrollment report? Future meetings, our regular school board meeting is not until the new year, Monday, January eighth at seven PM in the Northfield High School Media Center. And just so you're aware, the, we will begin that board meeting with the organizational school board meeting, which will be followed by the regular school board meeting, again, Monday, January eighth at seven PM. The other meeting in January is Monday, January twenty-second, also at seven PM in the High School Media Center. And we have one more item for business tonight and that's, before we adjourn, we'd like to acknowledge that this is the last school board meeting for Danita Delzer, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent. Danita is retiring at the end of December after twenty years of service to the district. And of course, it's difficult to encapsulate all of her accomplishments. Danita started with the district in nineteen ninety-seven. In terms of numbers, she has served under four superintendents, Doctors Charlie Kite, Terry Tofti, Chris Richardson and Matt Hillman. She has prepared all the meeting materials and minutes for close to five hundred school board and work session meetings and has administered eight referenda campaigns. She has provided orientation and support to numerous new administrators and school board members. What is most important, however, is the immeasurable ways Danita's work has benefited not only the district, but also the larger community. Oftentimes, she is the first person that a district family or community member might reach with an inquiry. Her professional manner and willingness to go above and beyond to get them the information they need provides them with an excellent customer service experience and an overall positive impression of Northfield schools. Danita shouldered a great deal of responsibility and readily accepted a significant increase to her workload when she was called upon to administer the numerous referenda campaigns. Her knowledge and experience in doing this critically important work will go unmatched. To her credit, Danita developed excellent relationships with key county, city and township officials that helped the district successfully navigate the myriad of challenges present in the process of running an election. But most importantly, as a consummate professional, she has brought a passion and commitment to her job that has earned Danita the respect of her fellow Big Nine colleagues, district employees, administrators and especially those sitting at this table tonight. As board members, we're ever indebted to her for the support she has given us. I know we all remember when we were first elected to the board and how grateful we were to Danita for helping us learn the ropes and providing us with ongoing support. There was never anything we couldn't ask her to help us research or a question she couldn't find the answer to. It's difficult to imagine when we assemble for our next meeting and not looking over and seeing her sitting, sitting at the end of the table or hearing her tapping away on her iPad. She's so deserving of our sincere appreciation and profound gratitude for all she has done and we wish you all the best in this exciting new chapter of your life and you will be greatly missed. [applause] Well, all I'm going to say is thank you. Well, if there's any other comments board members have, please feel free to share.
I've only known you four years, but it only took maybe a few months to see how amazing you are and we're going to miss you.
Thank you so much.
Well, I am just so grateful to all of you for all that you do to make, in a sense, my job easier. I mean, you're the ones who are out there in the community and, and, you know, I just so, so respect all of you and your commitment to this school district and to the children and doing what's in their best interest. And, you know, certainly I've learned a lot in these twenty years about education because that has, was not my background and, and just so profoundly, again, impressed by what the administrators and the board need to do to make everything function well. But, you know, certainly I'm going to miss the personal relationships that have, we've formed and particularly with the chairs. But all of you, you know, that's what's going to be the hardest, I think, is to say goodbye to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So for the last time to Danita, you will hear, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move it.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Margaret.